All right, welcome everyone in council chambers, council members. We're now going to call this meeting the whole meeting to order at 5:00 P. M. The territorial acknowledgement reads as, "In the spirit of reconciliation, we acknowledge, with respect, the history and living culture of the Chinabek, the people of Three Fires, the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi Nation, who have inhabited this land from time to memorial. We recognize that these lands are in territories of the Chipewas of Sawgin, the Chipewas of Nawash, Kletmuli, No'onis, the Sawgin, Ojibwe Nation, the keepers of this land. Georgian Bluffs is located on lands encompassed by trees forty-five and a half, sixty-seven, seventy-two, eighty-two, and ninety-three. We reflect on our role as treaty people and the need to live in respect and peace and show respect to the first peoples who inhabit these lands and waters." Adoption of the agenda, the recommendation reads as, "Agenda be approved as presented." I need a mover and a seconder. Councilors, Councilor McCollum, all the votes in favor, that is carried. Declaration of a key area of interest, does any member wish to declare a key area of interest? If not, now and at any time during the meeting, you decide that you have one, you can declare it then. Announcements, does any member wish to make an announcement? Not seen any, roll right along. All right, public presentation or participation, we have several presenters tonight, and it's going to be a fairly lengthy agenda, so please be patient. Any person who wishes to make a presentation to council must register with the clerk police seven days in advance of the scheduled meeting to register. You can complete the online delegation form, www.georgianbluffs.ca/delegations, or you can call the clerk's office, (518) 376-2729, extension 601. Six point one point one is the 2026-2030 Council Remuneration Committee. And tonight, we do have Brad Roberts here to present. And Brad, welcome, please come to the podium.
I'm sorry. Evening, Mayor and council members. Pleased to present a summary of the report presented by the committee. First, I'd like to introduce some of the members, some of them are here today for our Council Remuneration Committee. Anne Duhem, who didn't make it, she had prior commitments. Ron Glenn, I believe you're here. Ron, and then I got Bill Halliday. And then Peter, are you here, Peter? And then, of course, myself, I was the chair. So I thought I'd just introduce them. This is the first time we've actually got to meet in person. The committee met a total of seven times between July and November. Most of it was working through some additional data gatherings that the staff provided. So our objectives that were established by council were to create and circulate a compensation questionnaire for council members to complete. We did personal interviews with council members. Each of the committee members were assigned council members and did those interviews. We were comparing duties of council, Georgian Bluff council members, with those of their surrounding communities. We were comparing honorarium, per diem, meeting rates, allowances, expense, benefits, et cetera, for township council members with those of the surrounding communities. We were consulted with township staff and similar municipalities with respect to their policies and administration processes related to remuneration. And we prepared and presented a report, which is what we'll be presenting tonight. I want to take a quick moment to thank the staff. Staff did a lot of work helping and support the committee. We kind of forced them to go back a few times and gather data. They provided us quality information that was used in the presentation of this report. Well, the next slide is a little bit long worded, but I'll kind of just do it as concisely as I can. Just wanted to outline some of the objectives that we had from the committee. August thirteenth and nineteenth, the committee conducted those one-on-one interviews. And a brief summary of the findings are as follows. A time commitment workload, considering the preparation for and attendance at council, committee, the whole, and additional committees and boards, members reported between twenty-one to sixty hours per month of time being spent or committed. Additional time spent on community engagement and attendance at community events ranged from three to eighteen hours. Responsibles beyond meetings included conducting site visits, independent research, stakeholder consultations, often without direct compensation. Several noted the increasing complexity of municipal issues in today's environment, requiring more preparation time and policy knowledge. Community interaction was a big part of your roles. The main issues that were probably part of those interactions were roads, drainage, bylaw enforcement, shoreline access, waste collection, and environmental issues. All the members noted that engagement is core to their role, but is time-intensive. Staff and government relations, for the most part, most of the interaction you have is with CAO, while some might engage more frequently on constituent issues, depending on the situation. Other government interactions generally modest beyond the intergovernmental committees and boards that you're a part of. In terms of remuneration, some felt it was fair and adequate, others felt it was too low, creating very pre-younder individuals. A minority felt remuneration was too high, expressed concerns with public perception by fiscal responsibility and accountability. Some of the suggestions that came out of those interviews were including the indexing of compensation to make sure it stays up with inflation, clarification on event attendance, per diems and eligible expenses, considering a shift from honorarium plus per diem model to a straight salary model, improvements to transparency, and exploring illness-related abstinence and clear mileage rules. Chapters three and four included comparing to other municipalities, so those were the objectives. We did compare it to a number of municipalities in the surrounding community, both Gray and Bruce Counties, including even some of the ones where that mattered, included Aaron Eldersley, Meaford, Thomas Oak, Bruce Peninsula, West Gray, Brockton, Sawgin Shores, Huron, Kinnelos, South Gate, Great Highlands, Tanaminto, and the township of Chatsworth. So fairly good cross-section of municipalities of similar size and characteristics. Some of the aspects that we were comparing were council honorarium rates, per diem rates, travel allowances, mileage expenses, professional development allowances, attendance at special meetings, or special events, pardon me, the benefits that might be applied to councillors, and what the annual increases typically deliver. So we didn't complete parts of three and four. Some of the findings out of objectives three and four, which was the comparison to other municipalities, significant variance in compensation across with comparators, not to be unexpected, with the mayor's estimated annual compensation ranging from eighteen and change to about fifty-five thousand and change. Council compensation averaged around twenty-two thousand. The data collected creates some challenges, because every municipality does things just a little bit differently, and therefore comparing apples to apples is always a challenge, or you might be comparing McIntosh to Gala, Empire, and so it's a little bit different. They're all apples, but they're a little bit different apple. While comparators provided similar benefits in terms of technology, cell phones, the specifics of annual increases, the health benefits, life insurance, and dental pension plans, and professional development budget very significantly. 比我 data showed that council compensation for Georgian Bluffs is fair and in line with other comparable municipalities. Reoccurring trends through data and feedbacks collected suggest that policy would benefit from changes that would result in more efficient compensation administration, so more from the staff perspective, and increase in accountability and fairness, and strengthening policy clarity. So in terms of objective five, some of the adjustments that we proposed, we included the addition of a proposed purpose and scope to the policy. It's always good to have purposes and scopes, so when someone's going through it, they understand what the intent was. Recommended definitions, we added conferences now include relevant municipal subject matter, just to make sure that conferences were appropriately being booked. Scheduling public meetings, a bit more of a reference in there in terms of what that meant. Some additional structure under special events, we just provide a little more clarity what were approved events, and so that now includes official county events, events by official constituency offices, other levels of government in other municipalities, whenever and stay ceremonies, or attendance at events or ceremony for the township has provided sponsorship or nomination. All other events where there's no direct link to municipal governance, or there is no established attendance issue requiring council approval. Major amendments to policy that result of significant change or financial fact would be reviewed by the committee for transparent, oh, sorry. It's recommending that major changes to the policy be reviewed by the committee for transparency and accountability. Minor amendments can still be approved by council. Some of the minor amendments that will be included through the policy include the requirement for the chief administrative officer to sign off, we're removing that, just to make the process a little bit more efficient. And some clarity on eligible expenses for the conferences and seminar on that level. And some clarity on mileage expenses. The committee reviewed and looked at lunch and dinner maximum, so when the staff or certain council members are attending meetings, they have daily limits for lunch, dinner, and breakfast. And so we made some adjustments to those, excuse me, just to make sure that they were more comparable based upon, especially on late inflation rates for meals and things like that. So we did make some adjustments there. And then alcohol beverages, there was questions about that, whether that was, I think formally or informally, the council did not include alcoholic beverages in their expenses, but we just formalized that through the policy. In terms of remuneration itself, that's a tough word. The existing combined salary and per diem systems requires significant administrative work, is less transparent and difficult to estimate, and may impact work ethic and create conflict among members due to unequal workloads and expense submissions. So we recommend, the committee recommends, that a strictly salary compensation structure be implemented for ease of management and administration, increase fairness and transparency to prospective candidates and the public, increase leadership quality with adequate compensation to attract qualified individuals, and increase accountability, which may enable increased participation in local governments. The key features of the proposed structure include clawback clause. So if a council member happens to not attend eighty percent or more of the meetings, there's a clawback clause, and it's on a bit of a scaled level, depending upon what the attendance would be. Set salary covering all aspects of role outside of attendance at special events with an honorarium for other boards and committees members who were committees that members may be appointed to. So it's just strictly for your council, if you're on a board for another committee, that is in addition to it, and there's a hundred and forty-five as well. Put a cap on remuneration for attendance at special events to increase equity and visibility with council members and committee. So the next slide, I'm not going to read all this, but it gives you a sense as to what we're recommending. I'll just quickly go through the annual salary amounts. The mayor is at thirty-six, nine sixty is what we're recommending for two thousand and twenty-six. The deputy mayor, twenty-six, four hundred. And then councillors, twenty-two thousand. Depending upon what each councillor sits on, what committee they make it, some additional annual honorariums. And we still set per diem rates there for some citizen appointments and things like that. Terms of a financial impact, you guys are in the middle of doing budgets, so important aspect of it today. The recommendations presented by the committee have a very modest net estimated increase of approximately four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for council compensation in two thousand and twenty-five dollars. I kind of did a little bit of math there just to figure out that that represents about a two-point-one percent increase over two thousand and twenty-five, so pretty modest. Our sixth objective was to make sure we presented by the end of November thirtieth. We did ask for an extension, that's why we're here today, but we need to achieve that deadline. In terms of conclusion, as directed by council, the committee has undertaken a review and analysis of council compensation using comparator data from council-approved non-union compensation municipalities. The committee is recommending that council salaries be increased, and the township move to a strictly salary model with additional compensation for attendance at special events up to a set amount. Just want to express our appreciation to council members and their participation in providing feedback to us, and especially to the staff, in terms of what they provide, the efforts they gave us, they're very supportive, and they're very timely in their work, so. Heather Mack, thank you.
Thanks, Brad, for the, thanks for the presentation. I'm going to open it up to the council chair. If they had any clarifying questions we need to ask at this meeting.
I wanted to thank you guys firstly. Thanks for the data-driven and comparator-based review. I thought it was great. It was nice, nice meeting you out in here earlier. I have a question, and I think it's going to go to our treasurer. A two-point, just for transparency for the public, a two-point-one percent increase on our budget would rip them out to what for the average family? Like the dollar value, just a dollar.
We'll answer that then.
So for you, please correct me if I missed, it was two-point-one percent increase on the two thousand and twenty-five council remuneration, it's not a two-point-one overall increase? The overall increase is estimated at the approximate four thousand three hundred, which has less than a point one percent.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Excellent, great, thanks. Any further questions? Yeah, councillor Day.
Thank you. I'll echo councillor Scholl's, thanks and gratitude for all the committee members who took their time to play this important role for the municipality. And I do have a clarifying question as well regarding the committees that we sit on outside of this portion here. Some of these committees were added during their term, so if in the next term of council, another committee is added in, perhaps I missed it, is there, is there a way of determining a new committee's annual honorarium that would be consistent with the numbers that are here?
I think it's a good question. I think you could probably use some of the honorarium rates that we used for the other existing committees, you could probably use those as a basis to determine what that compensation would be. But I think if I understand it correctly, staff looked at that from the standpoint of how many times that committee would meet on an annual basis, and that's the basis for what those honorariums would be. You'd have to look at it from that perspective. Fair enough, staff?
Yeah, not, that's good. Yeah.
Thank you, deputy mayor. And I too would like to thank all of the committee members for the time you've given to this and the interviews and everything that you've put into it. So thank you very much for doing this.
Any further questions, remarks?
I would echo the same, yeah, thanks for your presentation, Brad.
Sure, thanks, Brad, for your time, and the committee also, so thanks again. All right, six point one point two is Richard Thomas and Tim Nichols Harrison from Owen Sound and North Great Union Library Board, two thousand and twenty-six draft operating budget. I think, Tim, you're presenting, welcome, Tim. It's good to see Rosemary in the crowd here tonight, too. Nice to see you, Rosemary.
Thank you, thank you, worship. Mayor, council, members, staff, and public, I'm pleased to be here tonight to share the One Sound North Great Union Public Library Board's request for funding for the two thousand and twenty-six year. I will be walking through the PowerPoint if I just say next without, yeah. There were some documents with stats that I did send out, if you need, I do have paper copy if it's easier for anyone to, yeah. So welcome. The slide that is in front of you right now, hey, that's even better for me. Thank you. The slide that's in front is actually the budget ask that we are. And you see, the township of Georgian Bluffs, the proposed amount is four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. But we receive on your behalf a public library operating grant from the province, and for Georgian Bluffs, that's eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. So the direct ask that we're asking is for the four forty-five, five twenty-four. Next. Numbers are a really important part of what we do and how we try to demonstrate the work and success of the library. And as I presented last year, in the package of information you have, you have the annual report from two thousand and twenty-four, and you have this month's library service index. It's the two pages with all of the data. It represents what happened last month at the library, okay? And it's going to our library board for the November meeting, and each month, we prepare infographic, the library to glance, and so you'll see some of that information pulled out right there. Next.
Tim, do you have more copies there? That might help all of us.
I think we only received one of the.
Yeah, one of the slides, so if you've got more copies there. Thank you.
Sorry for. So this sheet is actually from our annual report last year. One of the things that draws your attention to is that calculation of five million dollars savings to local residents. And how we do that is we calculate the, not the cost of the electrical, the electronic books, the e-resources, but the actual physical items that are taken out from the library. If people had in our community bought those items, it would have cost five million dollars, the materials that were utilized at the library. And you may argue that number's too high, because not everyone would buy everything if they couldn't get it at the library. Whatever number you choose, however you want to divide that, that still shows dollars in our community that are available to be utilized in other ways. So because by not needing to purchase those things, they've been able to utilize those dollars for other things, had they the dollars. They also draw attention to the number of visits to the library and the total membership, and I'll talk more about that in just a little bit. One question that we have is around the nature of memberships. So anyone can access the library and come into the library, but our specific member count is people who have a current library card. And that means that the card has to be signed up, basically, it's a year. So today's November nineteenth. If somebody had a card last year on November twentieth, it's still good for a year, right? So if they used it at that point. And when we do that calculation, similarly with other libraries, we actually count thirteen years, thirteen months back and eleven months forward, okay? And that gives us what are the current active library members, that they've had a card to use in the past year, because they could renew it, or they could have finished that card, but we need to be able to count for the year. I want to tell you that not all libraries do that, and I'm going to show you some stats where one library has fifty percent of its population have library cards. That means they probably are not ensuring that the card is renewed every year, they're automatically renewing the cards. We don't do that. The uniqueness of the union library agreement means that we're accountable not to one municipality, we're accountable to three, and we take that very seriously, that we want to give each of you the most accurate information possible to help you with the decision-making that you are doing. Next. So libraries are a creature of the Public Libraries Act. They're outside of directly municipal responsibility. They have additional tasks that they have to do following the Public Libraries Act. So we are responsible to you, you appoint people to us, but the task that we do at that point is the library side may or may not be in conflict with specific things that a municipality would choose. Next. We're unique, and we're the largest union public library in Ontario. Union doesn't mean unionized. It's an agreement in the Public Libraries Act where more than one municipality agrees to provide library services together. So they're not contracting, they're agreeing to be a library together. Our library has representatives here at this current time, councillor Tobin Day, representing Georgian Bluffs, and our vice chair, Rosemary Buchanan, the community representative from Georgian Bluffs. And then we have the representatives from Owen Sound, who mean one of the city appointees, our chair, Richard Thomas, representation from Chatsworth. And then we have a service agreement with Park, with the Meaford Public Library, and they become a partner and have representation at the board as well. So that's the makeup of the Owen Sound North Great Union Public Library Board. Next. Our board, our Owen Sound North Great Union Public Library began in nineteen ninety-four. Before that, it was the Owen Sound Library, that was a different organization. In nineteen ninety-four, fourteen communities came together and worked to have, to have an agreement around shared library services. This was a phenomenal thing to be accomplished by the CEO, chief librarian Andrew Arvidic at that time, and the deputy chief Judy Beth Armstrong. It was an incredible commitment to doing things together and finding a way forward in very challenging times. Next. Through amalgamation and mergers, that group has changed. Our first union library agreement was from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and one. The next union library agreement achieved full funding by halfway through that term two thousand and eight. So that meant all the municipalities, as part of the union library, were paying their fair share, an equitable share of the cost. In two thousand and twelve to twenty-one, the agreement was signed at that point by the municipality of Meaford, but there is a public library in Meaford. So the Libraries Act says that it's not possible for the municipality to take on that task, even if they'd like to, it should be the library. And so subsequently, the Meaford withdrew from the Union Library Agreement as they should, and we dealt library to library with the Meaford Public Library, and we have a separate agreement with them. But the funding model is exactly the same, similar to the Union Library Agreement. So they, so Meaford Public Library pays its same fair share cost for use of, for all of their residents if they choose to use the Owen Sound North Great Union Public Library. And then we had an agreement in two thousand and twenty-two, which is the latest iteration of the Union Library Agreement, and we based it on historic uses passages. So we were able to show what over the past thirty years had been the usage from each of the municipalities, and that's up for review next year. Next. So the agreement's been a wonderful demonstration of municipalities working cooperatively to deliver the costs. The core funding that we're getting from the municipalities is significantly less than most other libraries in Ontario that serve thirty thousand and fifty thousand population, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. Our service agreement with Meaford Public Library has been beneficial, and the library's broader funding concerns to our municipal partners over the past decade, and emphasized that it's vital to see an increase in municipal support. Reserves and other funding possibilities have become more and more limited with each year. Next. This is the breakdown in the Union Library Agreement and the partnership agreement for the costing that each municipality and the Meaford Public Library pay for library services. So in this situation, the costing for Georgian Bluffs is twenty-two percent of the municipal and partner. is 22% of the municipal and partner contribution. Next. So this is a chart. The province every year keeps track of, and this is in the packet that you have, keeps, we supply the data on everything that's happening in the library. And they parse it out into different bands. So we're in the population band 30,000 to 50,000. That's the population of Georgian Bluffs, Chatsworth, and Owen Sound. It does not include the population of Meford. Within that population, we're just below 40,000 people. And we're 12th, ranked 12 out of the 19 for size in that 30 to 50,000 group. If you look at some of the stats there, you'll see that we're delivering above that 12th place. In fact, we're delivering our combined circulation of eBooks and written physical materials is seventh in the province out of 19. And if we just look at the digital content, we're third in the province out of 19. Now I want to draw your attention to the per cardholder. Oh, if you look up above there, you will see a population that has like 40, 39,000 Brent County, and they have 21,000 cardholders. That's where I would suggest to you they're not keeping the cardholders have to be current. Okay, we do, for sure, ours are. I may be wrong. Surprise, that's a great number. If you look at our per cardholder use, so the library members who have cards, on average, every year they take out 30 items. We're sixth in the province for use by the people who use the library. So sometimes people say, oh, the library is not important. It's very important for your users. They're using it a lot. When we look at the local operating funding under the revenue there, we're $1,600,000. That's the contribution from Georgian Bluffs, Chatsworth, and Owen Sound. That's 18 out of 19 in the province. If you look at the average of the funding that's given by the local municipalities to their library, it's $2,300,000. So we're receiving every year $600,000 and more than the average for libraries our size in Ontario. We're doing really heavy lifting to provide the quality of services that the community demands with a much smaller municipal funding base than average. When we look at this, one of the things that we're aware of is that in this region, we have a double aging population. Okay, demographics. We're all getting older. That's normal. But in our region, we have a number of young people that are leaving for different reasons, but they're not in the community. So those numbers get skewed a little lower. And we have more people moving into our community that are older. And that brings, puts that, that stress on that. And we know that some people moving into the community are coming from larger urban centers that have higher expectations on what a library service should be. And we also know that we're dealing with an aging population where we're providing support around understanding using technology. Now, it's very common for people, if they're going to the hospital, to be given information that they should download and print off. And they're coming into the library to do that type of work, as one example. Next. So staffing. Our staffing level at the library, from 1975, when Andrew Armitage was the chief librarian, to 2012, we had approximately 15 full-time equivalent staff, 14.89 one point. In 2012, the library board went up to the municipalities at that point and successfully argued for an improvement of one staff position. They had hoped to be able to do that every year for five years. Currently, our staffing is at 16.76. But more than three quarters of a position is actually being funded outside of the core funding. So we're getting dollars from another source to do tasks that are not library focused. Staff are doing a part of that job. But they're being counted in that column. In 2026, we're asking for additional funding to enable one more FTE position to be added. If the municipal funding is limited to the Union Library Agreement of 4%, that it currently allows, unless we come and ask for more, then we cannot afford to continue one FTE position. A number of people, but it would be one position currently employed at the library. And we would need to look at reducing hours further. Already, we deliver one of the lowest number of hours for libraries our size in Ontario. It's challenging for us because we could be open more, but we don't have the staffing to be able to do it. The demand is there, and it's just not possible. Next. Just to give you an idea of that, and this slide shows you four libraries besides Owen Sound. They're comparative libraries. Three of the four actually serve a smaller population base than our nearly 40,000. And these are 2023 comparators. I wasn't able to pull 2024 yet. But we're at least five full-time staff down from all of those libraries. And they're very similar because again, they deliver one building. They have two stories. So they have a requirement needing staff throughout the building. And it gives you just a little bit of an idea of what we're wrestling with. Next. Why we need more staffing? And very clearly, in our, when we did the work on this budget, there were lots of things that would be great. We could ask for funding to do. We didn't. We looked at what can we do to ask for support so that we can deal with some of the staffing issues? One, we have to ensure the safety and security in the building. It's not 1975. There are different concerns and different challenges. It was a time when we could leave an area with a shopping student where we wouldn't leave that in this day and age. We need to have staff on the desk at all times. We need to be able to digitize and curate, make available local and regional digital content that we have, that people have given us. But we don't have the staffing to do the work to make that available. We need to deliver more services in Chatsworth and Georgian Bluffs. We need to be in your communities and delivering things for everyone and not expecting everyone to have to come into Owen Sound. We need to increase our programming. All the things I'm talking about, we're delivering less programming than many libraries. We just don't have the staff. We need to plan and provide more outreach beyond the building with different groups, service groups, agencies, organizations, community clubs. We need to better utilize and support our many volunteers, over 180. You have great examples. You know, the Georgian Bluffs Community Action Team is one of those groups. We use more volunteers in our building than any other library I know of. To complete program analysis and evaluation, the support of strategic plan goals, to develop alternative funding initiatives beyond our municipal base, and to support records management, HR, and other administrative tasks. Next. This slide shows the total cost that we're asking for, the $2,292,000, in, with the costs broken down into those four main categories, wages and benefits, book collection, occupancy, and then the other things that are related to what we need to do to be able to run an organization and a library. The middle chart shows what we're doing with the funding that comes to us from non-municipal sources. So we receive donations. We have, there's other funding sources that we've been successful in getting some dollars from. That's how we utilize those dollars. And then the final one shows you where your specific dollars are going, the municipal and partner dollars. So if we move to the next slide. This is just a breakdown, a little bit more detailed on what each of those categories looks like when we're talking about wages and benefits, or book collection, or occupancy, or other. And then next. This is the actual breakdown for Georgian Bluffs on how we utilize our dollars. So in asking for that $464,397, $388,000 go towards, we go towards our wages and benefits costs, et cetera, for the list. Next. And then lastly, this is moving back to the original chart and just showing you again the straight across for the 464, which was after plug, 445, and what we had received from you last year, 401. So it is a 10.97% increase that we are asking councils to consider.
All right, thanks Tim for the presentation. I will turn it over to council for any clarifying questions. Your questions may have formed a library board. You made any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you for the detailed presentation that answered the questions that were asked at our last meeting where we were talking about budget. I do want to thank you and the library board of directors members who are here tonight for your time. I understand this is a very busy day for you with multiple councils that you're visiting. So thank you for making time to share this information with us.
I'm not seeing further questions. Thanks, Tim, for your presentation.
Multiple questions and some observations. First of all, I think the library is incredibly important. I respect you for coming up here and I thank you for all the work you've done. It was a clear presentation in my mind. And I don't have a lot of history here. I've been here two weeks. And, but maybe you can help me. The, is there an annual increase generally asked of municipalities?
To councillor McCombe, through the mayor. Did that in the right order, right?
You're funny. Don't worry.
Thank you. So historically, when the Union Library Agreement was built, the agreement called for three, that allowed a three, immediate 3% increase. Okay. And that was in the 1980s, 1990. The challenge is that library costs have gone up more than that. And all of our comparator libraries have received more funding over those years. And so this inequity has built and built and built. For us to be successful in getting an increase, we have to convince the city of Owen Sound and probably Georgian Bluffs. Okay, we have to buy the Union Library Agreement to get an increase beyond the core increase. Knowing that this was challenging when we negotiated the last Union Library Agreement, which came into place 2021, we agreed, the municipalities were wonderful and agreed to a 4% increase. And then if we needed more than that, we could come. In the time that I've been the CEO, chief librarian, we've come to councils once to ask, I think, for a 4.5 when it was 3%. And we thought at that time. But we have tended to hold the line and do the best we could. Look at those alternative funding sources. Look at, we are fortunate that sometimes people give us donations and we've been able to utilize reserves. We don't have the capacity to continue to do that. And that challenge is getting more significant over time. So yes, we would be expecting, the council could still say, no, we don't want you to get the 4%, but you have agreed to that. In this situation, we're asking, coming insane. We understand that if we ask for the 4%, we're actually going to have to cut back on our services. So is there any way that we can move forward on that? And hopefully, the council may see that. Understanding all of the many complicated economic decisions you have.
I, I'll admit, I didn't, I didn't get this package. So I didn't get some of your numbers before I saw them on the slide. So I'm going through this pretty quickly. But we are 22% of your, like of the municipal portion of your budget. Right? So based on the idea that we have 22% of the subscribers.
Yes.
And the subscriber number, I think, was 39,000. It's almost 40,000.
That's the population base that we draw from. Okay, that's the cardholders is around. What is the number?
11.6.
11.6, perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect. I guess I have the observation from a, from a great peer perspective. So as council, when I was in here, council, I think wisely, tried to keep our overall budget from less than 5%, right? So, so that means that they went to staff and staff did their, did their thing in trying to find efficiencies and trying to advise us the best that they could. And really, having looked at it with fresh eyes, I can tell you that it looks like they did a bang up job and that services won't be depleted in any way, shape, or form. Library, on the other hand, looks like with the 4% increase, you can't continue to maintain the same level of service that we're used to. I think that's what I'm understanding.
Yes, sir. The, again, because we use other dollars to keep it to that amount. Those other dollars don't exist. So that's the challenge is for us to do the, for us to maintain the staffing level we currently have and all of the challenges that we're currently dealing with, we would need 7.5%.
So what we're saying then, if I understand, is that the cost of running a library has outpaced inflation, cost of living, and even our municipal tax rates. Like it's outpaced through, through the mayor to councillor McCombe.
No, I understand why we'd assume that way. But the challenge is, so let's use that where I talked about that we're underfunded from the average half a million dollars. Let's just say half a million dollars every year. That means every majority of libraries in our service that are delivering service are delivering it with at least five more staff already ongoing. That, the challenge for us is because we're always missing those dollars. We have more and more to catch up, trying to deliver the same quality of service that those other libraries are doing with more resources. And we don't mind the heavy lifting, like the staff are incredible. But we're just saying, at this point, we're saying, hold on. We can't continue this way. We've come to councils and told them that this was going to happen. It's happening. And the library board, in their wisdom, said this year, what, we went and talked, should we go with the four? This is what this would be, this is what 7.5 would do. Or this is what the 10.97 would do. And, and which really is the movement of a position. Loss of it, keeping or gaining. And the library board said, we need to, we need to take it to the councils and let them know it's our best shot is to make sure everybody's really aware of what's happening. So it's not that the libraries have outpaced. It's if anything, it's that we've done our very best to make do while others have gotten increases. And, and we've had to deal with, you know, when insurance went up by so much or electrical costs or whatever, we had to just keep absorbing those costs. And so other people have to, of course.
Follow up question? You good?
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councillor.
Thanks, Tim. This is a great, a great report. I think the library as well is important. I think we all think it's important. I know that when I step up here, every time I sit in this chair, I wear the hat of fiscal responsibility. And we have to keep in the back of our mind that we're using the taxpayers' dollars here. And I think it's important to remember that at all times. When I read an almost 11% increase, I was a little taken back by that. I know it's a lot. A question regarding the paper that you gave us, the 11,000, 649 people that have, that are cardholders. Is that number representative of the people that are in Georgian Bluffs with? Like how, I guess my, where I'm going with is how many people from Georgian Bluffs actually have cards?
Okay, so if you turn in that package to the library service index, every month we put this out and it has the Georgian Bluffs current number, membership is 2,739. The column before that is the Georgian Bluffs members at the same time. So October of 2024, which was 2,558. So you're seeing an increase over the past year of another 220 members. Okay. And again, as I said, these are current. If they don't renew their card, they will fall off and the number doesn't stay forever.
I have a second question. That's okay. When I read through the report, I didn't see any context of alternatives in terms of percentages. I guess, is your bottom line 11%? Is there no other? I just want to make sure both parties are happy. Is 11% your bottom line? Or is there other opportunities for percentages here?
Thank you, councillor Shortness. The, as I, when presenting, I said that this is the implication of the 4%. We know that that's the starting place. We're allowed to come for more. The board, in their wisdom, said, don't ask for the 7.5 and just. The board, in their wisdom, said, don't ask for the 7.5 and just maintain. This is still an ongoing problem. Let's tell them what, with the one position, right? Again, other libraries have a minimum of five more staff than we do. So I, it's not like I'm here coming once and saying, we'll never come back. It's, there's an ongoing challenge around what a modern library looks like. And do we have a way to see additional funding from the municipalities in the future? Not, not all at once, not even necessarily every year. But do we, is this a place that sees the value in putting the dollars here when you're wrestling with all the financial decisions you are? And I certainly understand how complicated that is. For us, we've been really trying to do the best as utilizing your dollars to provide the best service as possible.
Great presentation, Tim. I mean, it brings things into perspective. I totally understand where you're coming from. But I think really what I'm after is for us as council, we've listened to Tim's presentation. When does this come back? What is the formal process for council to, to approve, not approve, debate this further? Tonight is a public meeting, Tim's giving his presentation. But as Councilor Scholz has alluded, there, there may be options available. We need to have more of a wholesome debate when the rest of us absorb this. What is the process for that?
Thanks for that question, Councilor Scholz. I mean, Sam, I do believe we already included this in our mayor's budget, mayor's consultation.
Yes, that is correct. Through you, the requested amount has been what is included in the strong mayor's budget. However, that still does not bar this council from discussing it further. If our council wished to present a council amendment, we still do have that option available to you as you're still within that 30-day window.
Further questions? All right, Tim, thank you for your presentation. See Richard and Rosemary in the audience too. Thank you for your time. All right, delegations on the agenda items. If you wish to hear a report council regarding an item on the agenda, must register with the clerk's office. To register, you can complete the online delegation form, or call the clerk's office 519-376-2729, extension 601, or register in council chambers with the clerk prior to the meeting's start time, 5:00 p.m. Tonight, we do have some delegations. So follow the delegations in order I have below. Each delegate will have five minutes to address the committee. And thank you for your presentation. And the number one presenter for tonight is Cindy Shanks. Shanks. She's speaking on item 7.1.5. You have five minutes.
I'm the mayor and members of council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of a number of Cobble Beach residents. Firstly, we want to make it clear that we are not opposed to development at Cobble Beach. We welcome the growth of our community and look forward to the successful completion of Phase Three, the DELL. We respectfully ask that the developer proceed in compliance with all applicable agreements, conditions, safety, and environmental standards. Environmental is a big one. Our primary focus remains the same, the construction access road for Phase Three. We understand, what we understand is this, and as documented, an access road is to be installed on the subject lands and that all construction-related traffic be routed exclusively through this designated road. A letter dated February 27, 2025, received from Scott Taylor, Director of Planning for Gray County, confirmed that the draft plan of subdivision was approved. The draft plan included 37 conditions of compliance. For example, condition four states, the owner shall not commence any site alteration or work on the subject lands, including but not limited to the following, until they have entered into, excuse me, a preservicing agreement or a subdivision agreement in a form satisfactory to the township, filling, grading, removing of trees and rooftop soil, installing any works or constructing any buildings or structures. On October 27, 2025, rubbing and tree removal began. This activity occurred without a preservicing agreement or a subdivision agreement being in place. This is contrary to the conditions outlined by the Director of Planning for Gray County. The developer did not have required permits to initiate this work. This activity occurred without warning signs or safety precautions in place. Heavy machinery was operating within proximity of a public trail system routinely, routinely used by residents in visit. An onsite posted notice of project might be warranted to enhance, to enhance safety measures. Currently, the developer is now requesting a preservicing agreement, which would permit the clearing, tree removal, and related work. So why was a preservicing agreement not issued in February 2025 in lieu of a draft plan of subdivision? In summary, the, the central issue here is that the developer did not have the required permits in place to initiate the work. Consequently, excuse me, consequently, the work was halted by Gray County. Our question to council is this. For the work to resume, is the developer required to seek the necessary permits through the approved plan of subdivision or by issuance of a preservicing agreement? Mayor, council, Mr. Benner and staff, thank you for your consideration on this important matter.
Thanks for that. Please comment. Yep, that's it for now. Thank you. Our second presenter is Tom Clark.
Tom, members of council, thanks very much for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. Want to touch on three things related to item 7.1.5 on this evening's agenda. My name's Tom Clark and I've been a resident of Cobble Beach for 10 years. Firstly, I wanted to ensure that the council was aware and understood that despite what you may have been led to believe, I believe that a significant proportion of Cobble Beach residents fully support the ongoing development of what we know as our Phase Three. And more relevantly, with regard to tonight's agenda, have no objection whatsoever to the approval and execution of the preservicing agreement designed to enable the developer to proceed with site works expeditiously. Secondly, wanting to address just a couple of things that Ms. Shanks has asked us to think about. You'll have heard Ms. Shanks asked you to ensure that the developer advised by the conditions of the draft plan approval. Of course, this is normal for any such development of this nature. And the development process is full of security provisions and the like to ensure that this happens. Additionally, though, she, I believe, has asked you not to approve the proposed predevelop, the preservicing agreement, even though the preservicing agreement is an option clearly described in the very document she cites. In less polite gatherings than this, we have a name for that process. But for tonight, let's just say you can't do both. Lastly, it would be pleased to hear that's lastly, but in my mind, perhaps most importantly, I wanted to address the implications being cast around, both in emails circulating within the community and here this evening, that the developer has in some way acted inappropriately. That's a particularly disturbing assertion and one that the community both deserves and is anxious to understand. Any clarity that either staff or council could bring to the circumstances surrounding this confusion would be useful. That's all I have to say unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks for your time, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our third presenter is TJ Sekira, Design Plan Services Incorporated. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of council. My name is TJ Sekira. I am the president of Design Plan Services and a registered professional planner. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of Georgian Villas, the owner of Cobble Beach. I'm speaking on, on the staff report, DEV 2025-083. This is item 7.1.5 on your agenda. My client is in support of accepting the staff recommendation that the mayor and the clerk be authorized to sign the preservicing agreement with Georgian Villas Inc. for Phase Three of Cobble Beach. This is the next logical step in the development of the next phase of Cobble Beach. It's in keeping with the township's official plan bylaws and designating this area as a primary settlement area. I would note, the secondary plan designating all of Cobble Beach for development, including this area, was approved in 2003. Therefore, this preservicing agreement is just the next logical step of what has already been designated for development and the draft plan of subdivision, which was approved in February of 2025. We are aware there's some concerns regarding recent site preparation and that's specifically what I want to speak to. But I'm happy to answer any questions about, about any other aspect of Cobble Beach that council or the public may have tonight. There was a long and robust consultation with the township, the county, and all relevant agencies, including public consultation through the secondary plan, the recent recolor gray official plan, leading up to the approval of the zoning bylaw and draft plan of subdivision. Subsequent to that draft plan approval, in the normal course, the applicant and landowner began to address conditions of approval and sought permission from the township and county for initial site preparation. That would include tree removal, site grubbing, the install, installation of erosion and sediment control measures, and the construction of the access road for construction and servicing only. Any other works and any other works that would not require any permits from Grace Albuck Conservation Authority, the township, or the county. There may have been some confusion in the communication leading up to this site preparation. However, the owner operated under the full and clear information from the township and county that the works they wanted to undertake were permitted and did not require any special permits or approvals from any government authority. Subsequent to the start of that preliminary work, the owner was made aware of a complaint and the county would be, and that the county would be reviewing the work and the permissions pertaining to any of that work. In the spirit of full transparency, cooperation, and to be a good corporate citizen, the landowner stopped work immediately and voluntarily. There was no stop work order or no order to comply issues by any government authority. So I think you heard earlier that the work was stopped by the county of Gray. It was not. The owner volunteered to stop the work until this was sorted out. Upon further discussion with township and county staff, it was determined that the most appropriate course of action was to enter into a preservicing agreement with the township. That's the subject of today's report. Sometimes developments go directly to a subdivision agreement. A preservicing agreement is not required, but it can be a useful tool in certain instances. In this case, the preservicing agreement would be limited to the tree removal, site grubbing, site preparation. There will be no fill imported, no fill exported. And there will be work done on the construction access road. We are in support of the recommendation by staff. We've reviewed the draft agreement that has been prepared. We have no concerns and the landowner is prepared to execute, to execute that agreement as soon as is practicable. Thank you for your time. And the last, sorry, the last three things I just want to say is, no work will be done outside what is permitted to be done or which would require a separate permit without obtaining that in advance. The work that is proposed does not require any permits. And we only proceeded with the information and the knowledge that we got from the township and the county. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'm also happy to make myself available to any members of the public that are, have questions or would like to have any discussions after this meeting. When the item is called in front of council, you're welcome to call me back up if there's any other things like that.
Thank you for that presentation there TJ and bringing some clarity to the table on that. Thank you. Any questions from council on this particular piece to clarify? Thanks for now TJ.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to 6.3, public inquiries. Any person who wishes to appear before council with a question or inquiry must register with the clerk's office. To register, you can complete the online delegation form, or you can call the clerk's office 519-376-2729, extension 601, or register in council chambers with the clerk prior to the meeting's start time, 5:00 p.m., which we have done tonight. Recommendation reports run to 7.1, Development and Infrastructure, 7.1.1, DEV 2025-069, Big Bay Estates. Recommendation reads that DEV 2025-069, Big Bay Estates, can receive for information. CEO.
I just wondered if we could give a couple of minutes.
Sure. We can do that. It was on a roll. I thought you were doing.
Don't go through the various, we've had nothing to have been paid by the words. Not disappointed, I think they still have an audience. People probably agree it's a big time, but God bless especially.
All right, we're back on track. All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're back on Development and Infrastructure, 7.1.1, DEV 2025-069, Big Bay Estates. Recommendation reads in the report, DEV 2025-069, Big Bay Estates, can receive for information. I need a mover in a second. Councilor Scholz, council day. And I'll turn it over to Michael Benner, Director of Membership and Development, for a comment.
Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this is an informational report, I'll be, I'll be kind of brief, just not going through the report for council's knowledge. So Big Bay Estates, for those of you who don't know where it is, it's in the, I would say, the northeast corner of the township. Kind of following River One, you're kind of round, around from Big Bay itself down, heading south on River One. It's a collection of 85 lots that were developed in the 1970s through a method that was called checkerboarding back in the day. This was a prior to the Planning Act. So it didn't have a, a formal plan of subdivision associated with it. It was essentially judges and surveyors kind of drawing it all up. It exists as, the lots exist as separate lots, so long as they are in, in separate ownership. As lots develop, as we've come across several times, it's the last from same ownership. They tend to be worse these days through land registry office. There's a number of types of ownership within those 85 lots. There's, they're all mostly privately owned by private individuals or numbered companies. I should note that some of the lots have been transferred to the township. There's about 14 lots been transferred to the township through tax sales. The, the lots themselves are typically 3.4 hectares, about one acre in size. They have roughly, one third of that lot is located on a table land above a, a secondary bluff that, that follows the shoreline of Georgia Bay and Gray Road One. The remaining portions of the lot traverse down this very steep bluff down to Gray Road One. At the base of those lots, there's not really any room for development. The slope essentially comes down, levels off a little bit, still pretty steep, and then turns into Gray Road One. So the only developable area is really on the table lands above the slopes. There are some larger lots on the north end of the development, but by far the majority of the lots are, are pretty small in size. Those lots, all of those lots are accessed through a, a private laneway that was part of that original development. And there is an agreement back from 1972, when the lots were originally created, that allows, that originally intended to have those lots accessed via that laneway. And then when all the lots were developed, that laneway was to be transferred to the township as a municipal road. To have that happened, there had to have also been municipal water services put in place and that laneway improved to be an actual road. None of that happened. And some of those lots have that access to them still registered on title and some don't. The, just moving along quickly here. In terms of, from a planning policy perspective, the, all of Big Bay Estates is located within the Gray County's official plans, inland lakes and shoreline settlement area for the table land portions and then hazard lands for the slope portions. That inland lakes and shoreline settlement area kind of makes you think, well, they must have some development potential. In the, in the township's zoning bylaw, we have them zoned as planned development on the table land portions and environmental protection on, on the slopes. So given that designation and the zoning, designation portion says, yes, those lots could be developed. The zoning portion, being planned development, says that you would need to rezone them prior to them being developed. Our planned development zone only permits essentially existing uses and repairs to existing uses. Since there's no structural development occurring out there, there's the odd trailer up there, but there's no actual. there's the odd trailer up there, but there's no actual structural development. They would have to be rezoned before they do get developed. Because they weren't developed as a planned subdivision, there was no comprehensive planning that was followed. So there's no, you know, what we see today, comprehensive servicing studies, stormwater management engineering plans. None of that happened. So although those lots could be, if they were large enough, I suppose they could feasibly be developed individually, there would be a number of studies that would be required under today's planning regime. And some of those studies would include archaeological assessment, environmental impact study, functional servicing study to see how they would be serviced in terms of private sewer and water and if that works, of course, slope stability studies, and stormwater management reports, as well as demonstrated legal and traversable access to the properties along the private laneway. Or if they could somehow create a driveway up the slope to off of Gray Road 1, I suppose that's possible as well. So I suppose in a nutshell, if a person were to have a lot or several lots that were merged together, that would be big enough to develop. And they did all those studies, and they could prove access and stuff like that, perhaps that will be supported through a zoning amendment. We wouldn't be the only commenting agency, obviously. There would be, any proposals would be circulated to Gray County, Grace Albion Conservation Authority, Soggy Nation, and others for comments. When you start to look at that number of lots in a fairly concentrated ribbon form, it does raise questions about, about, and I'm sorry, I lost the word again, the comprehensive nature of that development. And, and there would be some concerns about precedent setting in terms of, okay, that person's able to develop, why can't I? And then also the more cumulative, that's the word. So you're looking for a cumulative nature of that sort of development in a fairly, right now, pristine environment. So I know of county staff that discussed the existence of Big Bay Estates with township staff. And we've kind of jointly thought that if they were to be, if that area was to be developed, the best approach would be a comprehensive development rather than one-off. So that's essentially what Big Bay Estates is at the moment. And so, ask you any questions about?
Thanks, Michael, for that presentation. And there's a lot of information in there. Just before I ask council if they have any questions, this is for information, and we do have a report coming back in the future, they did believe. So if you have any general questions, we can certainly ask them now, or if not, we'll, we're going.
I don't really have a question. Just, I had this brought forward because I have known that that development is sitting there or a potential, and I felt it was important that all of council be aware of what that is. And, yes, there is a further report coming forward. So thank you, Michael, very much for all the information.
Counselor Day.
I appreciate the information, just to start processing. And I think it's, I think there's some good value in what's stated in here. What role do the landowners play as this process goes, if this process goes forward? And I don't, what I don't understand is if all landowners would have to agree to this or not, if one person would be able to, if you needed agrees from everybody, or a certain percentage of people, or if this is yet to be determined, et cetera, et cetera.
Good question. Chair Pringle. So if I understand your kind of thought process, so is there a potential that landowners could come together to look at this comprehensively and look at a form of development? Or I suppose, which I suppose is a, is an option? Or are you thinking more if they individually came and said, what do I do to drill my lot?
Perhaps I'm, may I follow up? Perhaps I'm not fully understanding yet to how this, how this would work. There's all these studies that would need to be completed, the archaeological assessment, the environmental impact study. Those are usually undertaken by the property owner or the condominium development people. So is, are you, is this being proposed that somehow all these landowners would come together and do that collaboratively? Or all those things would still have to happen on an individual basis, but within a different structure, so to speak, of a planned condominium as opposed to individual building?
Michael?
Chair Pringle. It is feasible that each and every one of those landowners could undertake all of those studies to show how they could be built on their individual lot. You would then end up with 85 studies. And I would tend to think, given the size of the lots and given the, especially as you move south along that development, it's harder and harder to get to those lots. And it also raises questions about, can you even get to those lots safely? So those sites could be done individually. Today, if that, if those many lots were being proposed, the county and township would be looking at having it go through a planned subdivision, or because it's a private laneway, a plan of condominium. So that, that comprehensive approach would mean that you'd have more comprehensive studies that looked at the whole area as opposed to individually, individual little lots.
This is where my comprehension hasn't quite caught up yet, to those who have been looking at this issue for longer, I think, because it mentioned in early in the report, I was going to go back to the first page, that ownership includes private individuals and numbered companies. Some have been transferred to the township through tax sales. So there's, it's easy to communicate with us, perhaps, but there's those private individuals and numbered companies. Their voice comes in in what stage of this process?
So the lots are now privately owned, whether they are individuals or owned by a numbered company. There are some sections of the development that have several lots all touching each other that are, even though it's kind of a leapfrog, where you might have a person's name and then a numbered company, and a person's name and a numbered company. When you research who actually owns those pieces, it is the same family or same entities. They've just split it out so they don't, the lots don't re-merge. So if a, if a person who owns several of those lots kind of touching each other came and said, I want to develop this, we would have to, we would require that they go through all of those studies that were mentioned. If there were a large amount of them, say you had several individuals and numbered companies come together, say, well, yeah, we've decided we want to develop this section. I think what we're saying is that that would be almost a preferred approach because then you have more of a, the ability to look at this from a more comprehensive impact as opposed to individual one-off approaches.
Thank you. I think I understand enough for now, and I'll continue to learn as, as I'm sure we'll receive another report.
Any further questions? Yeah, there's a lot, a lot more information has to come forward for all of us here yet, and it'll come over due time, I'm sure. So if there's no more questions, I'm going to call the vote then. All of those in favor? Spirit. All right, we're on to 7.1.2, DEV 2025-079, Water Operations Agreement. Recommendation reads that council received report, DEV 2025-079, Water Operations Agreement, 2026, and the council approves entering it in agreement with Ontario Clean Water Agency for the provision of water operation maintenance services over a five-year term in a mode of $563,042 annually, subject to the Consumer Price Index for two years, or four years, two through five, refunded from the applicant water system user fees and general tax levy for non-water systems expenditures. And the council directs staff to sign all necessary documents pending legal review. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselors Winters, Mayor Carlton. And I'll turn it over to Kevin Britton, the manager of Engineering and Infrastructure, Cabinet Secretary.
Thank you, and to the chair, two members of council and two members of the public tonight. I present the contract renewal document with Ontario Clean Water Agency. And sitting to the right of me are members of Ontario Clean Water Agency, Carolyn McRey, who is the regional hub manager for the area, and Mr. Leo Paul, who is our overall responsible operator, responsible for the daily maintenance and operations of our water systems in the Council Day lots. So just a little bit of brief background. The township initiated a contract with Ontario Clean Water in 2016 for a five-year contract. That contract was extended in 2021 for additional five years. And as we come to the end of the five-year contract on December 31st, 2025, Aqua has submitted a renewal price proposal underlying a new five-year contract in attachment three. If you do refer to attachment one, it's the initial contract with Ontario Clean Water. Attachment two is the amended contract for the current years. And attachment three is the proposed contract. Aqua has expressed its ongoing commitment to advancing its partnership with the township to continuous improvements, operational efficiencies, and collaborations. Five-year renewal term offers several key advantages from an operational and strategic perspective, including continuity of services, supporting a whole system approach to operations, ongoing improvement initiatives, stability to effective plan and implement extended programs, capital projects, and process adjustments. This point is probably one, perhaps the most important one, the retention of experienced staff and staff knowledge of our systems, the day-to-day, day-to-day operations of our systems, the extended performance, tracking of asset management and maintenance, process optimization, compliance, and inform future capital and planning trend analysis and troubleshooting of our systems. So Aqua has submitted a five-year contract renewal that's presented in front of council tonight for their consideration. Year one would see an approximate 5% increase in terms of our existing contracts for a budget of $563,042. Again, that's about 5% increase. I won't go into the individual breakdown of each water treatment plant. It is presented in front of council for their consideration. So I will just give a very high-level brief background as to why the 5% increase comes forward to us today. As everybody is aware, cost of living increases, cost of contracts, insurances, vehicle basis for, so labor costs. My understanding is that Aqua just settled with their union employees, and the reopener adjustments were 3% in 2022, 3.5% in 2023, and a 3% 24 retroactive increases. My understanding is that Aqua ate those costs, and that was not downloaded to the municipality. So additional costs was their fleet. Again, the initial cost in 2016 was, or the initial fleet cost, and that, again, as everything came more expensive, was amended. So understanding council's consideration for the contract, staff also provided a alternative in front of council if they wish to proceed with the alternative option. As part of the existing contract with Aqua, the township is to give at least one year's notice if we were not to proceed with the contract. As the contract is expiring in December 31st, 2025, we are obviously past that deadline. So at the very minimum, we would have to give Aqua at least one year's notice. So we would have to extend the contract for at least one year. With the other consideration option, staff would issue a request for proposal for, for the same services. This request for proposal could allow the township to review current market conditions, ensure competitive pricing, and evaluate potential service delivery models that may offer enhanced value or innovation. It provides an opportunity to benchmark Aqua's proposal against other qualified operators and confirm that the township continues to receive the cost-effective and high-quality services. However, initiating the RFP, or Request for Proposal, process carries disadvantages. It is very time to zoom in on staff to prepare, evaluate, and administer the request for proposal. And it may not limit the assurance of achieving meaningful cost savings or service improvements. Continuity and a result of loss of valuable site-specific knowledge that supports system reliability and regulatory compliance may be lost if we were to proceed with the request for proposal and award to an alternative contractor, if you will. Additionally, the transition period associated with the new operator induces operational risks, particularly given the complexity of the township's multiple water systems. And maintaining the existing services provided through a renewed five-year agreement would provide greater stability, continuity of service, and support for long-term asset management planning. So presented in front of council is an alternative recommendation if they choose so to proceed with that. It is in staff's opinion, in closing, it is staff's opinion, the proposed five-year contract renewal that Aqua has presented in front of council, in front of staff, is justifiable and is aligned with current market and regulatory conditions. The renewal ensures continued compliance, operational stability, and retention of qualified staff within extensive site, sorry, extensive site-specific knowledge. And staff do recognize the value maintained as the township's operating authority, given the agency's proven performance, collaborative approach, and support for long-term asset management and process optimization.
All right, thanks for the report there, Governor. There's a lot of information in there, and it was a good report. And I will ask council, now, if they have any questions for, for staff. Counselors Winters.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pringle, it's a great report. I mean, and one of the things that I want to echo is, I mean, my, my history with Aqua back in 2016, when we originally switched providers, Aqua always, in my mind, always brought more to the table than other providers. And it always looks good to go to the table and say, hey, we should go out and look for alternative proposals, this and that. But one of the things, you know, that Aqua, I think, has always been very humble, and I've never had a conversation with these two in the room today, so I'm surprising them as well, is the fact that they're, they're representing and maintaining a lot of our neighboring municipalities as well. So you're getting the same expertise. You're getting the resources in an emergency because they pull on each other. And one of the things I always looked at was our low-lift pump station down at Balmy Beach. When the power goes out, there's no backup power there. There's no generator. Aqua had ability to bring in a generator for the municipality. There, there's more value than what you see just in the contract. And you always forget that when you go back out to RFPs and you look at price-driven. What is the actual overall component being brought to the table? What is the expertise? What is the stability of the staff, right? So I'm totally supportive of this.
Thanks, Coach. Counselor Sholless, I'll keep my comments very firm as well, and I'll echo Counsel Winters in that Aqua's been a great company to work with for Georgian Buffs, and I'm more than happy to vote for the recommendation by staff.
Further comments? Yep, Counsel Pringle.
I forgot you asked a question. So I understand the 5% increase. In fact, it's, it looks really modest in the five-year term of this contract. Does it go up 5% yearly, or is this 5%, and then it stays at that for the next five years? Just want to understand that.
Yes, through, through the chair. So the contract rate now is the 5% increase. Additional to year two to five, we'll just see CPI increases, price index, is my understanding. I'll go to Carolyn.
Very good. Further comments? We'll call the vote, all of us in favor? No, it's carried. Thanks, Governor, for the part, and thanks, Team Aqua, for being here.
Thank you.
All right, on to report 7.1.3, DEV 2025-081, Request for Extension of Draft Plan Approval 42, CDM 2013-03. Recommendation reads that October 16th, 2025, correspondence from Design Plan Services regarding the request for an extension of draft approval for plan of condominium 42, CDM 2013-03 for Georgetown Villas Inc. Blue Bay Villas being received. And the council supports the request for a three-year extension of the draft approval to February 18th, 2029, for Plan of Condominium 42, CDM 2013-03 for Georgian Villas Inc. And that stop be directed to forward the motion supportive of the request to the County of Gray. I need to move her a second and put her on the floor. Scholz, Councilor McComb. Michael, we're back to you.
You... We really agree on this one. So under the Planning Act, plans of subdivision, plans of condominiums are, got received draft plan approval and registration, are every three years have to come back for an request for extension of draft plan approval to keep the development active. With Blue Bay Villas, sorry, Blue Bay Villas have been a very active subdivision over the last several years. Although they received initial draft plan approval in 2013, they've been progressively building out as over the last several years. In fact, over 37 units, I was just recently informed that actually 34 units have been built. So they only have three units left. Their draft plan is coming up for renewal next year, and I think it's in February. And so they're requesting the extension for another three years to finalize the development.
Thank you for that. I'll look at council here for any questions. I am not seeing any, okay. I'll call the vote, all was in favor? Notice, Karen. We're onto 7.1.4, DEV 2025-082 is another request for extension, draft plan approval 42T 2017-05. Recommendation reads that in October 17th, 2025, correspondence from MJ, Devonport, and Associates regarding the request for an extension of draft approval for Plan of Subdivision 42T 2017-05, Deerfield Acres being received. And the council supports the request for three-year extension with draft approval to July 23rd, 2029, for Plan of Subdivision 42T 2017-05 Deerfield Acres. And the stop be directed to forward the motion in support of the county of Gray. I need to move her a second and put her on the floor. Councilor Winters, Councilor McComb, Michael.
Thanks, Attorney. Similar to Blue Bay Villas, Deerfield Estates is a lot of time in condominium, but it's a lot of subdivision. It's located on the south side of Church Side Road. And it was granted draft plan approval on July 23rd, 2020 for construction of 28 detached homes. I dropped the two when I was typing that, I can catch it, sorry about that. So 28 detached dwellings is in two phases. The first phase was 28, phase two is a future development plot. Deerfield Estates is kind of proposed on the premise of having municipal services, both municipal water and sewer. They haven't really built or started to construct this phase of that development, awaiting the extension of services. A little bit different with this one, well, it's not different, but a little more unfortunate with this one, is through the county's approval process, we're only providing support and then the actual approval, draft plan extension goes to the county. I just wanted to mention that the county requires 10 tests to be satisfied before they grant draft extension, draft plan approval. And through their process, Deerfield Estates has been able to address all 10 of those requirements. And as such, township staff are recommending that this be supported and then we'll move on to a letter of support to the county.
Thank you for that, Michael. Any questions from the council? On CNN, I'll call the vote, and all was in favor. Notice, Karen. 7.1.5, DEV 2025-083, Kowaboo Beach, Phase 3 Preservicing Agreement. Recommendation reads that the report, DEV 202-083, regarding a preservicing agreement with Georgian Villas Inc. for Phase 3 of the Kowaboo Beach Development be received and that the preservicing agreement be amended to tree removal, site rubbing, installation of erosion and sediment control measures, the construction of an access road, and other activities that do not require permit approvals from the Gray Solvable Conservation Authority and that the mayor and clerk authorize to sign the pre-servicing agreement with Georgian Villas Inc. for Phase 3 of the Kowaboo Beach Development through bylaw. Need to move her a second and put her on the floor. Councilor McComb, Mayor Carlton. And Michael, we're back to you.
Mayor Pringle. So Phase 3 is in the background. In summary, Phase 3 introduces 64 additional single-detached dwellings and three open space blocks, one memorial block and a public road system, including the extension of Cleese Drive and then a bit of an internal loop coming off of that. Through the overall development of Kowaboo Beach, there's been, back a number of years now, there's a master development scheme put in place, after agreements were put in place. And as mentioned earlier this evening, Phase 3 is a natural progression of that development. Council may be aware that back in 2004, sneaking into the first part of 2000, sorry, 2024, sneaking into the first part of 2025, council issued the a number of conditions as a recommendation report going to the county on Phase 3. That included to the seven-ish conditions for draft plan approval. We also had to do a zoning amendment to recognize that development moving from private development to residential. That was completed in late 2024, early 2025. Prior to that happening, GVI, the development group, did approach the township about a preservicing agreement. And there was some work done on that. But then in early, or sorry, late 2024, it might, I'm right. Soggy Nojibwe Nation requested some additional work on archaeological and environmental matters that GVI then undertook. And so just for council's iteration, there's now a, in terms of the archaeological work, there was, prior to all of this happening, there was a stage one, a stage two were completed. Now through the Phase 3 development, there was a stage three and stage four development. Our work completed that further defined the Soggy Homestead and other surrounding archaeological and heritage developments. There's also additional work done from environmental impact and environmental heritage piece that Soggy Nojibwe Nation is becoming increasingly involved in. And those additional studies were also completed. In this fall, GVI started to do some clearing and grubbing works and had a normal preparation for the plan of subdivision. And mentally, there was a bit of a communication breakdown between the township, the county, and GVI as to what was required for the works to be completed. And through that, through those discussions, it was determined that the best course of action, make sure everything follows proper procedure, was a preservicing agreement. The preservicing agreement before you this evening is a little bit different than a typical preservicing agreement you see in a plan of subdivision. Before I go into a little bit of details, preservicing agreements and the subdivision agreements are fairly common process that a plan of subdivision would undertake. A typical preservicing agreement would go through the initial site preparation, but then also the installation of in-ground works. And keeping in mind that preservicing agreements are based on the knowledge that all the works undertaken are fully the responsibility and at the risk of the development group. Oftentimes, preservicing agreements occur prior to the final approval of engineering studies and drawings. In this case, GVI has, as they've just very recently submitted a full scope of engineering drawings and studies for review. They recognize that they don't want to do the in-ground works at this time. They want to take advantage of the winter months where we don't have any breeding bird seasons or other issues to deal with to do the clearing and grubbing, which basically means taking down trees, getting the site clear and ready to go. They also want to install their erosion sediment control works and also limit the work fencing to protect the heritage aspects of the site. And they also want to install the access road from Ferskeel Road across Kowaboo Beach lands to the site itself. And that would be the extent under this preservicing agreement. While this preservicing agreement, if council chooses in their wisdom to... While this is happening, staff are already had some initial reviews of the engineering drawings and sites that have been updated and resubmitted. We'll be working with the development group to finalize those submissions. Typically, engineering submissions take one or two iterations to get everything approved and right. So that's going to take a couple months to get that. We'll also be working on the full subdivision agreement that will then address quite a few of the conditions that are put forward in draft, on the draft plan approval. I think there's, I wrote down that number and now I forget. I think there's somewhere around 13 of the 37 conditions directly relate to that subdivision agreement being put in place. The full subdivision agreement is essentially a contract between the development group and the township that says, okay, you can build this and you're going to build it based on the drawings and studies that were submitted. You're going to put forward securities, financial securities that the township and other assurances, insurance, and what have you, that ensures that you're going to build it properly. And if you don't, then we can draw on those securities to make sure things are actually built in accordance with the plans. So that, I would suspect that we'll be bringing forth the full subdivision agreement sometime next spring. And then that will permit GVI to actually start the in-ground works, creating the roads, creating the lots, doing the lot grading and drainage and putting in the infrastructure that would, you'd actually see would be part of a full subdivision plan. So essentially, the preservicing agreement for you tonight is, it does have some securities associated with it. Typically, a preservicing agreement would look at, you know, security that goes against the works that would be involved in that preservicing agreement. So that would be the works are right now, they're about, actually, my report before you was updated with those numbers and the numbers before you aren't accurate. The numbers that you see now at 366,000 are a little bit, the numbers are a little bit less than that. And that would be, the securities would be about 10% of that, which would be 35,000 change and some deposits as well. So preservicing agreement, just to say that, preservicing agreement does have some securities with it. They aren't the full securities that you see under a full servicing agreement, but they're there as well. And as mentioned earlier, that preservicing agreement allows the township and it gives us a little bit better control over what's happening under the initial phases of this development.
All right, thank you for that, Michael. I'll now look at council, if there are any questions for...
I wonder if it's prudent for us to give a little bit of evidence. You did hear from two delegations tonight. I appreciate that there are different perspectives within the community. But one reference that was made tonight was about the developer going ahead and doing the work and then the computer, whether they were asked to stop or stopped on their own. I think that it's prudent for me to get a comment because we were involved in the potential decision to go ahead and start. So I think it would have been about two weeks ago now, the developer reached out to us to talk about an intention to start clearing and grubbing work and asking if there was any impediment to them doing so. And at that time, we advised, and we don't have a clearing and grubbing bylaw that would prohibit that per se. But credit to our planner said, just hold on, I'll reach out and make sure that we're not missing anything. So at that time, we did reach out to Gray County, Gray Solvable Conservation Authority, and Soggy Nojibwe Nation, just to make sure everything that was in place was in place and there was nothing that would impede them going ahead and doing the work. So fast forward to a day later, developer contacted us and said, you know, are we okay to do that? And we said, we've reached out to Gray County. Gray County has told us there's nothing from there to prohibit us that. We don't have a bylaw about that. Gray Solvable Conservation Authority advice, they had no concerns. We were outside the burning season, so we thought that that was okay. So we communicated, here's like everything's in order. Developer went ahead to start with the clearing and grubbing. Subsequent to that, Gray County made, found that, oh, okay, hang on, maybe there is part of our forestry bylaw that prohibits going ahead with this. And then intervened from that standpoint, at which point the developer said, okay, well, we'll stop. So it is true that, you know, if there is some confusion, we participate in that. And I'm offering this because it was me, I said, it's Michael's absence. It's my understanding, we've gone ahead. We've circulated these other organizations and we believe that you're good to go. So just to be crystal clear about that, so there's no misunderstanding or an illusion about why did things start and then stop. This is our opportunity to say we played a part in this. I wanted to offer you that as part of the report. And the reason I'm doing it is because I was the person, I reached out and I said, so, and that was...
Any comments, Councilor Cale? Councilor Winters?
Thank you. Here you go. Okay, no issues with what's in front of me here, I have one clarifying comment today. But I'd like to commend everybody on the process made and the conversations that are being had by all parties, right? We've heard different sides, we've heard the township's position, we've heard it. It makes you kind of progress in a process that allows us to happen where everybody could sit and listen in a friendly environment and have this conversation. But my real question is just a matter of, I don't know if it's technicality or not, but we have a preservicing agreement in front of us which says that we're going to do clearing and grubbing and base road. But we include all of the items of underground services in the back as part of the estimate. It just, when I look at it, it just seems like it's clear, but it's not clear. The agreement is strictly for roads, for grubbing, for erosion control, that sort of stuff. But to throw in all of the asphalt paving, the underground services and stuff in the estimate in the back, this is, wait a minute, is that clear? Is that normal?
As you, Mayor Pringle, to Councilor Winters, it is normal to put those estimates in just to give a sense of the overall scope of the development and what it would cost. We did have some discussions about, do we just plug in the numbers that would be directly related to the activities that would be happening? And I, we probably could have, but then it... I felt that it was better to show that here's the big scope of everything that's happening. And like, here's the list of the reports and the drawings and everything that needs to be followed. I did do an update to the report to kind of just explain that better, but I think I missed the deadline to... The reports, it didn't fall into the finalized agenda and I do apologize for that. It did have a bit of an explanation to it, a better paragraph for that.
I appreciate that, I just thought for some clarity, it was worth asking the question.
More comments, many guests come for this.
Thank you. Sounds like a complicated process and I also appreciate the multiple comments from multiple parties involved and the calm nature of the discussion. Just for clarity, I want to make sure I understand and that is, I think it's already been stated, we've heard a lot tonight, so I just feel like I need to hear this again. The, some of the preservicing work, the clearing, the grubbing, the erosion control, and the sediment protection will not require the use of a dedicated access road, but might be, but will be using the roads that already exist. And the dedicated access road might... And the dedicated access road might occur concurrently or post that grubbing work, but is not dependent. It is not, will not be built specifically for that grubbing and erosion control, et cetera, et cetera.
One more. And that, to you, that's actually a really good question. Because there is, just by the nature of the activities, when you think about how is this going to play out? And we do have a TJ here, perhaps he can provide better clarification, we'll take a shot at it. To get that access road constructed, they'll have to come off for scale. But then even to get the project started, there will, they still have to mobilize, I think is the, is their right engineering terminology on the site. So they have to get there somehow. And they can't just start it for scale and march forward without getting in there to at least even start the erosion sediment control work and a bit of that, that initial clearing and grub. Certainly, once they have the road built, all of the works will be happening via that access road. But initially, they still have to get to their site somehow.
Just to confirm that behind you, there's been a nodding, nodding head from TJ. So that we can see that you, your eyes on the back of your head.
Yep. Really good comment. I want to highlight a really good comment from Councilor Winters. Tonight did go very amicably and it was reasonable. Full credit to developer and also staff internally. So there's a lot of work getting to massage the delegations before we get to here. So lots of time spent over the last week between different staff that are in the room, Michael especially, but also our clerk, in organizing the delegations that were before you tonight and also the developer to bring staff here to help explain the process. So certainly lots of people responsible for having this move forward in such a way. Thank you for that, you know.
Your comments. All right. Any further comments from council? Questions? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? All right. And I was carried. And thank you to everyone that presented tonight and Ryan for stepping up and taking the history apart. So as a CEO, and we talked about everybody. So thanks for your time. All right. We're moving on to sub point two, community environmental services. Seven point two point one, CES twenty twenty five zero seven, recycling changes for the ICI property owners. And the recommendation reads that council acknowledged a transition of responsibility for recycling collection to the province of Ontario effective January one, twenty twenty six. And that council directs staff to circulate correspondence to IC and I property owners to inform them of upcoming changes to recycling and connect with them to resource for finding alternative options. And the council directs staff to extend the building of the current IC and I properties, having curbside recycling collection to be able to dispose of the recycling through the township for the month of January twenty twenty six. I need a mover and a securer to put on the floor. Can everybody jump up once? Counselor Scholz. Eric Ralton, Jerry, over to you, manager of operations.
Thank you very much to your chair. Just I'll go a brief history here, hopefully I'll keep it brief as possible. And twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-three, sorry, the province announced that they were taking over control of the recycling program for all Ontario municipalities as of January first, twenty twenty six. George Bluffs has continued to date with control of recycling in the township. There was options to opt in, opt out. We chose to stay with control until the January first, twenty twenty six date. October first of twenty twenty five, a letter from the Minister of Environment was received. A letter detailed a change to the regulation that will not allow for the industrial, commercial, institutional recycling, just that having that, that IC and I no legislature actually also includes multi-residential units of six units or more as well. I just wanted to make that clear. The regulation has changed and not be allowed to collect that IC and I recycling along with residential recyclables. Staff, since that letter has received, staff have been working on a number of different things, trying to determine how many IC and I properties we have within the township, how many people, how many of those properties are currently being collected and trying to understand truly what the full impact would be to Georgian Bluffs. So staff has reviewed our impact property data and have found that the township has five hundred and eighteen properties that fall under the IC and I umbrella. Two hundred and eighty-three of those are vacant commercial properties or farms without residential portions, et cetera. So and therefore, specifically to those farm properties that are residential and those vacant properties, they were not eligible to get recycling picked up anyways previously. So therefore, the township has two hundred and thirty-five properties that are currently utilized as IC and I properties. Of those two hundred and thirty-five properties, staff and our contractor waste management know of approximately fifteen properties that currently have curbside recycling or collection. The, it is, it is assumed that other, the other properties already utilize commercial means for recycle collection. Therefore, they, they won't be negatively affected by this regulation change. Staff have reviewed the potential impacts of the change and we've contacted our current recycle contractor for pricing to continue recycle, recycling calculator or collections of the IC and I properties. But we have not yet had an opportunity to receive those costs from, from waste management. However, it would be fair to say that waste management would need to send a separate truck only to collect those IC and I properties because they are not allowed to mix the residential stream of recycling in the same vehicle with IC and I property recycling. So it would be very expensive for them to bring just one truck up into our township to collect a handful of properties. But I do not have confirmed costing from that. I did want to note that in the letter from, from the minister, it did allude to potential further changes to the regulation that may walk this ruling back or something else may happen in the future. But it only alludes to that. So I can't, we have no guarantees that that will actually come down the line. I did also want to note that after grading the report, I did continue with a few investigations on costs. And I guess the best option that we would probably have in front of us is for these commercial properties to be able to take their, their recycling to the Miller Waste Depot in Owen Sound, which has a site access fee of five dollars and fifty cents. And that, they have no current limit to how much recycling you can come. They just kind of told me that, well, if somebody brings a giant dump truck with it or whatever, they might say, well, no, that's getting a little out of hand. But any, any person with a vehicle with a couple of recycle bins or whatever, it is only that five dollars and fifty cent cost to access the site to be able to continue to get rid of their, their recycling. And yeah, I have, I'm available for any other questions if you have any.
Thanks for your report. Any more questions from council? That's for today.
Certainly is a regrettable situation and one in which theoretically this should be improving our fifty percent, approximate fifty percent recycled rate in Ontario. BC is closer to eighty-one percent. So there's a lot that we could be doing, none of which is your fault. I realize the timeline is too short and we're not, municipalities are not nimble enough to necessarily implement a solution. Do we know what any of our neighbors are doing? Is there, if the province does not pick up this missing piece, is there the opportunity to work with a neighbor to support those ICI, IC and I organizations, businesses?
Through your chair. It's a bit of a mixed bag on what other municipalities are doing. There is a lot of emails, a lot of messages flying around where everybody is asking everybody, what are, what are you doing? What, like, so there's a lot of cross-communication with not a whole lot of decisions made. They're like, everybody is dealing with it in the month of November or December right now. So I can't tell you what, really what everybody's doing. I'm not sure. Owen Sound contacted me this week. They still haven't made a decision yet. There, there have been some municipalities that have made a temporary decision. Most of them are what I've understood is the ones that have a bit more of a downtown core that we don't currently, like, we don't have, that where it really truly like affects a downtown, BIA downtown core. Since, it's just as an example, like the Sunset Strip is fairly, it's large commercial developments. They all have their own programs going already. It's just a business, small business here, a small business there. And sir, and I didn't mention it before, I believe I mentioned it in the report though, that some of these downtown businesses out of that approximate fifteen that we know of, they also have a residential portion to that building. So the recycling that's being picked up right now may actually not even be the commercial one, so it may not affect them anyways. I know that wasn't part of your question, but I just thought it was relevant. So there, there has been, there have been some municipalities that made a temporary, just to get them passed to gathering some more information. Unfortunately, as January first for us, like our contractor cannot put that stuff on in their truck. And I haven't got a costing from them to what that would be to continue. So I know it really doesn't answer your question, but it's a mixed bag everywhere and everybody's juggling right now and they don't really know.
One truck for thirteen properties. It's a, it's a expense that would be hard to justify.
And I did talk about it a bit in like the climate change and our targets. If, if we were to then try to hire a single year truck to come to grab those thirteen, that would also backtrack our, our gains on our climate action plan as well.
Comments? Any further questions?
I just make the comment, if I could, that, that it's, it's regrettable that this is the way the Ontario government decided to service municipalities. It's, you know, not an attack on, on the province by any means, but it's just a comment that, I read the letter that was attached as well. I'm sure there was a lot of thought put into the, to the service delivery mechanism, but it's, it amazes me at a time when we accepted, you know, sort of recycling as one of our responsibilities that we're, we're going to hire a company that doesn't, doesn't do that, just doesn't make a pile of sense. I'd say from Georgian Bluffs perspective, that like our overall exposure, our potential exposure is in the five hundreds. It's like you said, it's only fifteen right now, but it is in the five hundreds possibly if, if everybody was to, if those properties were to develop or become IC and I properties. So it probably behooves us to try and pick up the slack in some way so that partnership sort of, and I use that term loosely, discussions with other neighboring municipalities to figure out if they're going to do something and what they're going to do. It's probably wise to keep going down that road just to see if there's any way that we could be involved. It, it looked to me from the, the literature, like there was no timeline on the, on the Ontario government's ability to, to secure that service. So, so it could be a while. And so I think what you're doing, you're taking all the right actions and yeah, it's just a little regrettable. That's all.
Good comments. Any further comments? I just find it kind of challenging that industrial, commercial and institutional cardboard, cardboard. So, you know, I need to differentiate between my cereal box and shoebox coming out of the store. So that's the part that really kind of gets me a little bit. Are you going to differentiate all that? Paws one bad for the other, but anyway, we'll have them figured out. Other comments? Yes. Counselor Scholz.
Thank you. From a cost perspective, this can, this can be absorbed into our current budget now for twenty twenty six or five. Yeah.
Sorry, through your chair. The, the cost extension that I was referring to is, is just being able to handle for an additional month utilizing for those like fifteen properties that we know of, not the two hundred and eighty-three year, whatever the number was, sorry, for them to, to bring us recycling. It's just to assist them with an, an extra month of the ability to get it away.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Yes, yes, counselor day.
I just assume we'll get those businesses as much notice as possible to find alternative solutions.
Yes.
Any further comments? Yes, McCollum.
So I would suggest that probably the industrial portion of it in the township are already handling theirs already. It'll be those small commercial establishments that this is going to put an added cost on to, or the institutional. There was at two thirty this afternoon, an email come out about advancing the circular economy with the communications toolkit. So I got one as mayor. There's another one saying it went to group email, but it says, dear councillor Thompson. So I don't know. Okay. I'm seeing staff say they've got it. So, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any further comments? Yep, counselor day.
To acknowledge as well, as we have previously, that this includes not-for-profits with Georgian Bluffs as well. So presumably some places that rely, might rely on volunteers already. So to add another job to take recycling somewhere is, is a, could be a very significant impact to success of recycling for those organizations.
No further comments. We'll have to wait and see how it unfolds. All right. If there's no further questions, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? I was scared. All right. So seven point two point two, CES twenty twenty five zero eight. And it's the winter operations plan. The recommendation reads that the proposed winter operations plan attached in schedule eight, we report CES twenty twenty five dash zero eight to be approved. I need a mover and a securer to put on the floor. Winters, Scholz, Jerry, we're back to you.
Thank you, Chair. From year to year, the township reviews our winter operations plan to ensure we are meeting our regular requirements as well as publishing information for our residents so they know how we propose undertake our, our winter maintenance and therefore know what to expect on a daily basis. The plan that is appended is report details that info along with additional resources that you can find on the website. A general version overview of what residents can expect is that their road will be plowed once per day following a snowman. Depending upon staff and equipment availability, weather, wind direction, traffic cooling of a particular road, second plowing may occur, but it's not the norm to be expecting. Sidewalks, with the exception of the ones on greater or finer kill sites, will be cleared once per day following another snow event, just like roads. The township utilizes a sand salt mixture to improve traction on our roads. But therefore, just to acknowledge that, that we do not apply straight salt. And therefore, this means a resident should not expect that a township road needs to be free and clear of all snow and ice from edge of pavement to edge of pavement after a snow event. Like they may be used to skating on an upper provincial highway. As, as, as far as the winter operations plan document goes itself, there were a few minor notation changes to the document from last year. But for the most part, the plan is, is the same as, as the previous year and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Jerry, for that. Good report. Just want to put out one comment. Three years ago today, we had a foot and a half of snow. Just in case anybody was wondering. Yeah, you're welcome. Just glad to bring that up. Comment, counselor day.
I'd forgotten about that. I just wanted to acknowledge that there's been a significant I just wanted to acknowledge that there's been a significant increase in the awareness within the documentation and perhaps in practice, it was always there. But just acknowledging that salt is important and like maintaining, providing maintenance to protect safety of human beings is very important. And salt is also problematic for local ecosystems. And you seem to be striving for a good balance in there of safety and looking at long term consequences of salt use from where it ends up and doesn't leave. So thank you very much for that.
Comments? Any further comments? Not seen any? Okay, then I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? I was scared. Thanks, Eric. A little update from members appointed to county council committees and local boards. Eight point one is county council. Are there any county council updates?
Well, I do have a report, but I don't think it includes anything from county council. Just kind of saying what I've been doing. So October seventeenth, I went to the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus Municipal Conference in London. And speakers there included MP Rob Flood from, sorry, it's MPP Rob, I guess, with Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Steve Payton, who's always entertaining, Brock Dickinson, and a fireside chat with MPPs Lisa Thompson, Matt Ray, Will Buma, and Paul Vickers. And it was a really difficult conference to decide which sessions to go to, so I opted for the ones that focused on infrastructure. And I have brought back some information that I've shared with the CAO. And I think at some point we'll reach out and get some more information that we can bring back all of council. On the twenty fourth of October, I went to the Kill Site movie night, and that was a lot of fun. Staff were there. I would still say special thanks to the Derby pioneers who were at hand giving out candies. Roller Derby group handed out candies and they were putting tinsel in the children's hair, which some of the children really enjoyed. And inner township fire department were also there handing out candies. And I think there might have been a fear of a shortage of candies that night, given the amount that was on hand. October thirtieth, I went to the Grey Counties Economic Development Leadership Forum at Cobble Beach, followed by the Wardens banquet. And five members of staff were there as well. I think we can all attest to the value of the presentations and the networking that took place. Roger Mooking, who was there or was there and takes part in the Planning and Economic Development Committee at the county. He's always as enlightened to listen to, and his big question for economic development at the county is always, where's the romance? We can have data and numbers, but they don't tell the whole picture. Roger always wants to know where the romance is. So include the fun and excitement. And he challenged us to think of how we create an environment that brings the people to us instead of us chasing after that business. Who are the artisans, the creators, the workers, the producers and the users in our community and what are the needs of each? Invest Ontario was in attendance again, outlining what they offer to municipalities with information about their partner portal. What do they require from us to profile our municipalities to investors? And Luigi Presta, who is on contract with the county as a consultant, talked about negotiating frameworks to win. And finally, there was an announcement by Hanover and West Gray outlining their proposed mutual prosperity agreement and the steps that it took to get there. And that was very interesting to listen to. Gives you some ideas for how we could be working with our neighbors. And that is all I have.
Thank you for that. Any other board members or committees with an update?
Yeah.
I was, I was back at your level at our last meeting, so.
All good. I do have one noted here is the Grey Brews local action plan. Counselor Corber's not here. Would you like to give us an update there, Brittany, on that? Possible? Thank you.
Sure. And Mr. Chair, the local action plan forms part of the requirement through the need to see to policing act that the detachment commander is required to essentially summarize the local actions that the detachment commander plans to undertake as on part of a three year plan. So this plan represents the detachment commander's goals and objectives essentially for policing throughout the detachment community over the course of the next three years. So this document is presented to you for your commentary. Should you wish to provide any comments, this is your avenue to do so, and we will share them with the detachment commander at the board level.
Thank you. Any comments by anybody who's like, see the report and read the report on it? Good. Any other announcements? All right. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. Notice of motion. Does any member wish to provide notice of motion or notice of discussion? We're good there too. And tonight we don't have any closed sessions, so there's none. Our last piece is adjournment. Council will meet in its regular schedule on December the third, twenty twenty five at five P M. If there is no further business, I will now call for adjournment of this meeting. I need a mover, seconder. Counselor McCollum, Counselor Day. Discussion. Call the vote. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.